If we, if we're looking at paving that at some time in the future, that's going to be a half a million dollars or more. And then you could add that to the fire station as well.
I also think that during the budget, we could potentially talk about a reserve account for this if it made sense at that time.
Yeah, you could add money into a reserve, yep. The architect response, I sent out the letter and email and we, we, to the five act architects. Gave them until December 5th to respond and out of the five, we had four that responded back.
Quick question. Are the four, are they the ones that had responded?
The first time, yeah.
The first time, so we already have some experience with them?
Yep.
Yeah, that's, that's the only people that requested sent to. They were finalists in the last process. The five, four were interested.
You will get in your packet for the meeting on Tuesday. You know, I, I prepared a batch of information and my, my recommendations and opinions. But you'll get a link to all of the interviews that they did. There's about six hours of interviews that they, the, the, all four of the candidates did. And I prepared those and put those into the, into the, my comments for, for you. And you can do that, you can look at that at your leisure. But it is, it's about six hours of, of livestream.
When will we get that?
You'll get that probably tomorrow afternoon.
Okay.
The fire department has been really busy with traffic accidents over the past several months. They had just had another two today. Many of the vehicles are getting totaled. Luckily, we haven't had many serious accidents out of the total vehicles. Number of vehicles that have been totaled. But it, it's just been pretty much nonstop for those guys over the past, I'm guessing, three months, Bill? Yeah, it's been just accident after accident after accident. I think they had two today.
At what point does M.D. put some sort of passing lane, bind the green thumb? If you're pulling down into Porter Street, which is how I get home? That's about as dangerous as you can get.
Yeah, and we just had one just recently, yeah.
Unfortunately, they track fatalities.
Yeah.
So it has, I hate to say it, but somebody has to, has to die there first.
We've asked a number of times.
Really, when you look at changing some of these patterns, it's on a death count.
They were asked to lower it to fifty from, as it is in Rockland, through to the thirty-five by Vinyl Street and they wouldn't do that, so.
Why do I think it has more to do with cell phones than passing lanes?
Yeah, it's, it's been bad, you know, and, you know, today it was a three-car accident and Jason said all vehicles were totaled. Public Works has been taking advantage of the opportunity of the good weather to get a lot of work done. Trucks, getting trucks ready to go. We've done some minor culvert repairs, one on, I think you got an email on, one on Route One, which really isn't our culvert to take care of because it's on Route One. But we did a minor repair there to get the person through the winter and Mike contacted the state to, and they, they're looking at replacing that culvert this spring.
Just a little ways down from the market basket?
Yes, yep, yep.
Perfect.
And at some point, just, I would love to get my hands on that culvert study that we had the intern. I guess I never grabbed it at any point.
I'll try, try to remember to get that. It's all, I think we can get you a printout. You, you won't be able to see it, you, you can get a printout of it.
Rick, you skipped the harbor.
Oh, I did, okay, sorry.
Didn't want to talk about the flapping sail.
Yeah, it's still out there. It's supposed to come out of the water tomorrow. Harbor Committee has been working on their ordinance revision. They've had, the last meeting was, I think you, were you there, Doug?
Yes, last week.
The last meeting was, they didn't have enough attendance to make a quorum, but they apparently got a lot done. You know, they, they had a lot of time to beat things around and they're hoping to come back with a presentation in February. As I said, the boat is, that boat is supposed to come out of the water tomorrow. And remember, Holiday on the Harbor is December ninth, the fireworks at five thirty. Let's see, and Finance, Megan has been working on policy, many of the policy revisions that you will see in the auditor's report. So she's been working on that, so hopefully we'll have many of them ready to implement when we get the draft report for the January meeting. Budgets are due December eighth and many, many are in and Megan is working on those now. Police Department, it's been fairly quiet in Police Department, knock on wood.
What about all the car accidents?
Yeah.
Something doesn't quite.
Right, yeah, yeah. But we have one, Chris Taylor is graduating from the Police Academy on December fifteenth. And we've hired a new officer, Police Officer Jacob Powers, he's a Camden Hills graduate. I think he was something of a wrestling legend.
He was, yes.
I was standing next to that kid going, geez, I actually wouldn't want to get into a tussle. It's like one of the, that kid's, yeah.
He seems like a very, a very nice young man, so I'm really pleased with the Police Department. I mean, they're young, but I think we've, I think we're doing well. Thank you to the Rockport Police Officers that have worked so hard over the past months with Chris gone and being shorthanded. They've picked up a lot of extra shifts. And occasionally, the Camden Police Department has given them backup shifts and support, so that's been very helpful. We've implemented the new Vision software. Jamie is working with the Ordinance Review Committee. All staff at the Town Clerk's Tax Collector's Office have been, got trained in motor vehicle, motor vehicle stuff. We had our annual holiday Christmas staff party. Thank you very much to Diane, Megan, Hannah, and Molly for all the work they did pulling that together. They, they really worked hard on that. The highlights are down there in the pictures. Also, the town office has all been decorated and that was done, again, we got a bunch of employees to go out and help decorate the town office.
Really, that's nice, too.
Could I back up just one second? So I had talked with Jamie too, and he said that it was crazy that there was only five hundred dollars in new permit fees. Is there like, is there like a rational explanation for that or just one of those quarters that it just didn't, it was just slow?
It's just been really, really, really slow. It's been, the whole year's been slow. The whole year's been very slow. He's down a lot in his permits and, and applications. I mean, the planning board, I don't think has met in several months.
That's what he was saying, too.
They've had a lot of workshops, but from what I understand, they haven't had any projects.
There's not a whole lot going on out there.
Get to building.
And finally, I will be on vacation beginning Sunday and return on January second, two thousand and eighteen.
See you next year.
We're not done yet.
Okay, any comments, questions for the manager? I do have one comment, and actually, this is for the board. It's on the safety training with the sexual harassment training. I've offered to Rick, it's not my place necessarily to do it, to come and speak to the employees in the training, but I have offered, and Rick is deciding whether to accept, but I want the board's blessing as well on the sexual harassment training, just to go and pass a message along from the select board as to how important the board thinks that is. Unless the board thinks I shouldn't do that, that's, that's up to you guys.
I think that's great.
I think it's a very good idea.
Yep.
I just wanted, wanted to give a.
Are we allowed to sit in on that training?
Sure. You could certainly come, come down and sit in on that.
I would encourage all of us, if we can attend, to attend.
I think that would be appropriate.
We're all, we're all potential.
Yeah, we can all be affected, we can all be affected.
Yeah.
And then my other question on the West Rockport Fire Station, I mean, obviously, the, the big expense is going to have to wait a couple of years. Is there anything we can do in the interim? Can we keep working on the design in any way, shape or form or anything like that? Any work we can do so that when the funding comes along, we're more ready?
Will, Will and I had talked about that, about, you know, maybe earmarking some of the money that we had pulled out as we talk about, you know, how to use the remainder of the money to, to get the schematic designed on, you know, to get a schematic design so that, that, you know, we can be ready to go out to bid when, when we decide. And it would be good to use that money now, to use the money now and get that schematic design nailed down.
If it reduces the cost in the end, that's, you know.
I can understand that, but I mean, how do we, how do we know what the design's going to be? Have we really decided? I mean, are we moving, are we moving the primary station out there?
No, 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 it's just the two-bay station that he's.
I mean, I do think it's, I think your comment that it needs to go through capital improvement is probably apt. That the capital improvement committee probably needs to look at that. Of course, Alan is, is the capital improvement committee chair and he's been intimately involved with it, but but where we're looking at a different project than was originally contemplated, it's probably worth having that.
This would be a project for ten to fifteen years?
Yeah, I.
I mean, for the station, we build the station and it would expect to fulfill its role for ten or fifteen years.
I would think longer than that, yeah.
That's what they were saying is.
That was one of their, their points, I think, was that if we build a full two-bay station out there, that it will hold for a generation at least.
And that, I think maybe the ten to fifteen years that you're thinking of is if we were to do the first option, the one that was the single bay extension to accommodate more trucks, in roughly ten to fifteen years, maybe we would be expanding that station and then we would have to tear down what was basically new construction. You know, only ten or fifteen-year-old construction to expand the capabilities.
I mean, Alan made that pretty clear, that he was not recommending that one-bay solution.
Right, but there was some discussion, and I don't want to speak for Jason, but at some point, someone had thought that maybe we should consider moving the primary station out there just because of its location at seventeen ninety and people living out there.
Well, I think he spoke to the idea that having two units out there and two units in here would probably be the best solution for the insurance rating for the town. I think, I think, maybe I'm remembering incorrectly, but I think he said that losing a presence in here would perhaps.
Well, I'm not saying lose a presence, but.
Well, and we would still maintain that presence here in town. It's just that because of the, the aging fire, volunteer firefighter, you know, age in where they're living, there's more folks at West Rockport that can respond quicker than in town. And I guess the, the way that I was, I thought that we were going to do it was we start to get back some better estimates. We start to understand some of the numbers that we're dealing with here and then we would have, you know, at some point in the not-too-distant future, another meeting specific to discussing that and looking at options, probably somewhere around the budget time to see if we want to work a reserve account in. I just thought we were going to get some, some better numbers back at some point and then have another kind of specific meeting on it or a standalone agenda item, but not this week or month.
I guess my point is, you know, if we're going to think about this project, we had one presentation where they showed some pictures of a two-bay station. I guess I'd like us to really give it some thought and, you know, make sure we have a really long-term horizon.
Okay, any further comments on the manager's report? Okay, if not, on to new business. And we have, first of all, a very generous donation from the Lakeview Orthodox Presbyterian Church to, to consider and to vote to accept.
I move to accept the gracious donation by the Lakeview Orthodox Presbyterian Church and send them a warm note of thank you.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion on this at all? It's, it is somewhat heartwarming when we get out an organization like this. It's not required to pay property taxes, but realizes the benefit of the services that the town provides and, and sends in some donation.
Here, here.
And they have, they have done this, this donation for several years. And I, I think, I think what they do with the Police Department, because the Police Department doesn't have a place for it to go, they don't accept donations, but I think what they use it for is for some event or something and that both Police and Fire do that together. And that's what that money gets used for.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That motion is unanimously approved. We do have a committee resignation tonight from Linda Passan from the Opera House Committee. So we need a motion to accept that.
I'm moved to accept the resignation of Linda Passan from the Opera House Committee.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. We should add with regret and thanks.
With regret and thanks.
For her service on that committee. She's been on the committee for quite a while, I think, and has served also in other town committees. Any further discussion?
The only discussion is that this really is regrettable. The Opera House Committee is now down two members. We are really trying to find some people who are available and interested in, and in particular, people who would have working experience of how such a facility operates, you know, experience with lights or tech theater or something like that. So anybody who knows anybody, put your thinking caps on.
Yeah, just looking out in the audience there.
Staring at you, too. I'm doing my best to twist arms as much as possible.
I tried one too, and I didn't get anywhere.
But let's, we'll keep trying.
Well, yeah, but so, so for those watching at home or on the livestream, that's a committee that, that could use some help right now. If you have an interest in our historic Opera House, then stop in at the town office and, and pick up a committee application form. Okay, the motion is on the floor to accept the resignation. All in favor? Any opposed? None, okay. We have three committee applications this evening from Steve Smith, Gretchen Leoni, and Richard Remson for the Keep Rockport Beautiful Committee. I had a note that Steve was going to be here, but I don't see him.
Actually, Steve called me and I, I made an executive decision to excuse him because he's been here for plenty of meetings, so.
He's pretty well-known. In fact, all these people are, are well-known to all of us and I don't feel any, any issues at all about. We did get Maggie Timmerman's application, but not until very late this afternoon and I decided that we would just hold that till next month. The only question on these is we do need to stagger the term expiration dates. These being the first three, I would suggest that we could appoint them to the longer terms if that's, that's what they'd be interested in, in the three-year terms. And then, and then subsequent members who come in, we can ratchet it down to two-year and one-year terms. Unless, unless anybody knows of anybody on this list who would want to serve a shorter term.
What I'm just thinking is, why don't we wait until we have a full complement and then sort it out among the people? You know, some people may want to be three, some may want to be two, some may want to be one.
So then we'll hold off on appointing them tonight?
Well, we can, we can appoint them and then with a term expiration to be determined.
Yeah.
We'd have to have a further vote on that at a later meeting, but we can get them on the committee and get the committee sort of.
Yes.
Get the wheels starting to turn.
That would be great.
Can we, can we do it all at once? With one motion?
I think we can.
In that case, I move that we appoint Steve Smith, Richard Remson, and Gretchen Leoni to Keep Rockport Beautiful Committee with length of terms to be determined.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? I think these are all people who will be very helpful for that committee. All in favor? Any opposed? Nope, okay. We don't have any committee presentations this evening. I, I put it in a note for the board. For those committees that have not yet presented, if you're liaisons to those committees, you may want to check with them and we should probably start to get some of those in over the next couple of months so that we can, particularly anybody who has a committee who has budget issues coming up, it would be good to get those in in January, February, so that we can have that input before we get to the budget process. Okay, next, we have a presentation on the status of Mount Pleasant Street from Will. Bet you didn't think we'd get you on before seven thirty.
Good effort, good effort.
We have in the packet the site plan.
Do you have, I, I brought some hard copies.
Oh, okay. We have some in the packet too, I think.
Yeah, they're gigantic.
This one, this one is a little larger. And it's got just a little bit of new information on it, so.
How many trees do we have to kill?
I know.
We do our best.
I don't think we really have to kill many trees in this thing, do we?
This late, late summer and early fall, we completed a rebuild of about twenty-seven hundred feet, linear feet of, of Mount Pleasant Road. That was made up of ten different sections, some as small as seventy-five feet and some more like six or seven hundred feet in length. And it was the sections that were determined to be the worst and the ones that were rutting up last winter. So those were dug out, completely rebuilt, new material, new base, new finish course. And now, the plan I gave you tonight, there's money left that was, I think, designated from Mount Pleasant and then there's some, some leftover also as part of that overall bond package that was done for a lot of the infrastructure projects. And so based on, on using about a hundred and twenty-five thousand that might be available, what we're showing on the plan that I gave you tonight is a couple of options of how that might be used. One is the white section to the right, which is the, kind of the beginning as you're going up Mount Pleasant. There's a section there that was paved, what, when was that paved?
Last year.
Last year. And, but it was only a base course that was put down. So we're proposing that some of the remaining money be used next spring to put the surface course on that and finish it. And then with the remaining money, we've shown two possible options. One would be to do a base course of about, what, three thousand one hundred and fifty feet? That's the yellow line. That would get you beyond Molly's house on the curve and almost a good portion of the way to where the spring is. The other option would be to do a base course and a finish course on what we're showing as the red section, which is two thousand feet. The total length remaining of unpaved road is about, what, nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-three feet? So it's about five hundred feet short of two miles.
Is that length including the proposed?
Right, right now, from the end of existing pavement to the Rockport town line, is just short of two miles.
And so we would cut a good portion off of some of that with the.
Right.
Which one would you recommend?
You know, I think some of it depends on what you think is going to happen and what you want to see happen permanently up there. If you think that you're going to continue to budget some money for additional paving, then I would say do the base course and then plan in the next year or two to put the surface on it. If you don't think you're going to do that, then I would do the base and surface. That way you know it's going to hold up and be there for a long time. But the initial, but doing more base initially, if you know you're going to follow up with some surface.
Because that lasts for.
Well, yeah, it'll last, the traffic's not huge up there. It makes it a lot easier for Mike to maintain it and plow it. And it gets you a bigger visual and perceptive bang for the buck because that's a lot more road that's going to be paved.
We'll be passing in front of most of the houses that are up there, correct?
The other thing is, is that yellow line gets you around that corner by Molly's house and past Jack Lane's driveway. And so, you know, that's a section that's a little steeper there. It would certainly make a, make an impact, that's for sure.
I was going to ask, what's the, what's the condition of the road beyond the end of that yellow line up to the town line? How's that going to hold up over the next couple of years?
Well, the sections that we just rebuilt should, should be really in good shape. And one thing I should mention is that what we're showing in the yellow and red, it's not just paving, it includes prep also. So there's a prep that has to happen. There's going to be some fine grading and, and prepping before the pavement can go down over that section. So that's an all-inclusive there. The rest of the road, there's some sections that we haven't rebuilt and we know that the material in there is, is average at best. So there's, that's going to probably, you know, over time, we'll have some other areas that get rutted up and will need to be fixed. The areas that we have just done, the longer it goes before we pave, the more we have to prep before we pave. The more it gets sanded and salted and regraded and gets contaminated, then.
And how many of those sections are beyond the end of the yellow, the ones that we've done?
Well, there's quite a bit. There's probably about half of the total length, maybe a little more than that.
The worst section is the flat where it's straightened, where it makes that sharp dog leg to the, to the right, going to the top of the page. That straight section where there's the opening by the blueberry fields there, that section got pretty bad. That section was really bad last year.
Oh, on, at the Hope End?
Yeah, at the Hope End, yep.
Right. I wouldn't, I wouldn't suggest, though, doing patch pavements.
Right, right.
Because each end of it is going to get damaged and chewed up by the plow and I don't think that's a good way to go.
Yeah, and that, and the thing about that end is there's only one person, that is only one homeowner up there that, that, that affects if we ended up, if that section of road gets really bad, that homeowner has the option of going out the Hope End and getting through. The, the challenge is the school bus comes in from the Hope End and picks up kids up in, in the middle, correct? And it, they drive through. So it, if they can't get through that, that section at the top of the page there, the school bus doesn't go through there and it, they, the parents have to get their kids.
Now, that section that was the worst, though, did get completely rebuilt this summer. So I would not expect that we're going to have that.
We're talking then about the possibility of taking the, for lack of a better term, the fire station money in the bond and putting it into doing the, either the red or the yellow on this map.
And we have some money, there was a little bit of money, I think we've got about twenty thousand dollars left in the bond. The, the money we had earmarked for Mount Pleasant Street, some, some money there left. If you added that to the hundred and twenty-five.
So then, I guess my next question after that is regarding the rest of the road to get it to where we want it to end up. Is that a process that might be able to be handled in, in regular budget appropriations over the subsequent couple of years?
You would be, you would not, you would not be doing any other roads in town.
Yeah, I mean, if you were to, if you, for, in today's dollars, if you wanted to, right now, say, we want to get this done with and fix this road and pave the entire two miles, you'd be talking probably five hundred thousand.
What, I can't remember if it was this board or the other board. When the folks came in and presented, I felt like we had a pretty decent plan worked out to get it, get it done on a kind of specific timeline that was pretty respectful of the issues that they were facing. How did we accomplish that? I'm just trying to go back in my brain.
I think it was a two-year plan and, and one of the years was this past year where we had an appropriation of, you know, a hundred thousand or whatever.
But then we were going to have to come back to the board to make the decision about paving.
Paving, paving hadn't been decided.
Hadn't, hadn't been decided. The, the challenge is that the money we've pu, we've spent on this now, if we don't pave it in ten years from now or fifteen years.
Money is, you know, going to be lost money.
It's against my better judgment because I'm trying to get some of the capital improvement stuff done. But there is two hundred and fifty thousand we're thinking about doing something with. You know, picking away at the capital improvement things that quite possibly could be added to that. Everybody's sighing.
I'm not, actually, because, I mean, in, in the, in the long term, too, it's more expensive to maintain a dirt road than it is an asphalt road.
It's hotter on the trucks, it's hotter on.
And I know the whole thing was, for a long time, Mount Pleasant said, we want it dirt. And then it started getting rutted up and we got to get it taken care of pretty quickly.
So how much money had you talked about before I mentioned the two fifty that you had?
About one, one forty, one hundred and forty.
So you've got four hundred thousand roughly, plus or minus with the two fifty.
If you took all that, all that money.
Well, you, you're either going to fix your infrastructure, which that road is part of it, or you're going to pick away at the capital improvement stuff that's been neglected. So the road, I think, right now would, would get the upper flip on my.
Well, what are our legal and what are our moral obligations to the people that live on that road? I mean, you know, it's maybe seven households and I understand to them it's important, you know, but to pave that for half a million dollars means that, you know, that's half a million dollars less for sidewalks in Rockville and Mechanic Street and, you know, I know it's an uncomfortable question, but.
Well, I think, I think the, whether you want to call it legal or, or moral, it's, we've got to make sure there's access to those properties all the time. And this winter, that was pretty questionable. So I think you've already done what you needed to do to fix that. I mean, we, we rebuilt a, you know, seventeen hundred, what was it, twenty-seven hundred feet of, of road this, this summer. That was all of the problems from last winter, so.
And remind me what the cost was roughly, just, was it?
What did we spend?
One fifty-five and then another ten, change order?
So a hundred and sixty-five, a hundred and seventy thousand?
Yeah, okay.
Can I ask a question, too? The, and it would be poor practice to continue the yellow line if we, if we were going to loosen up money instead of doing the surface layer and that binder layer. Doing the binder layer the whole length doesn't make sense?
Um. Um, yeah, I mean, it, it does. And you, you just wanna, you wanna do that if you know you're gonna continue with budgeting some money to get the surface part done. Cause it just won't hold up as long. And I mean, we're, we're talking about a total of three and a half inches of pavement, two inches and, and one and a half. And that's a big difference between just the three, that extra inch and a half makes a big difference to how the whole thing holds up. And so, but it would buy you two or three years of having the, people think that this road is unbelievably felt better than it ever has been and is, if, then you could pick away at the surface course. It doesn't take much prep to do that.
By the time you get to the end, you may have to be doing a little more shimming here and there to bring it up, but-
If it goes too long, you will.
Right.
But considering wintertime and stuff, it would be-
There's other sections here that-
Always passable.
That are a little potentially questionable whether they're ready to be paved, too. So, there's some areas that would, that could use a little TLC before they get paved.
Well, and the other thing is if you make the leap of faith and do the whole thing by a combination of monies, uh, you're not gonna have to be putting anything into it next year.
Yeah, if, if it, if we magically could come up with the money to pave it, you know, the maintenance cost of that road would go, would, we'd save a lot of money in maintenance, wear and tear on equipment and-
Yep.
Well, I think this is a discussion that we'll have to have at budget time, basically. But maybe for budget time, we could, I mean, these options that, that are presented here are with money that we have on hand-
Yep.
-now. So, that work could be started before the first of July if, if the conditions allowed.
Right, and that money actually needs to be-
It does need to be spent, or we have to turn it back.
Right.
Um, and I, you know-
I don't think Megan has gotten a response from, um-
You know, you, you never wanna spend money just because you have to spend it. But this would be money that would be spent in a good cause, I think.
Yeah, I mean-
And so, for budget questions at budget time, it would be interesting to know, you know, if you give us a few options, what the cost, for example, of doing the binder layer only all the way out-
Yep.
-would be. And also-
Uh, a number, three seventy-nine.
Three seventy-nine for-
Four thousand five hundred fifty-eight and twenty-three cents.
I'm just kidding, but, yeah, four seventy.
So, that's for the binder layer?
For the binder layer the whole way.
Yep. Does that include the yellow that's on here or not?
Yes, that's including the yellow.
That does include the yellow.
Yeah.
So, if we knock a hundred and forty off that, what we've got left in the bond?
Not, not minus a hundred and forty, that's, that's all in. That's spending everything that you need to do to pick up where eight hundred or so feet needs surface on it and then run binder out.
Okay, so, the total cost of that is the-
Three eighty.
Three eighty. But what I'm saying is we've got the hundred and forty that's already alloc, or could be allocated for it now-
Right, right.
-which means that if you take that off, that leaves, what is it, three eighty less two, less one forty is two forty roughly to get binder all the way out.
All the way.
Well, one of the things we'd have to be, be paying attention to is what Will said earlier is there, there, the stretches that we did the work on, those are ready to pave.
Right.
The other stretches may or may not be ready to pave, you know. We may have to do some more cleanup work.
Well, this is why I say, I think, uh, some options for us to consider at budget time, including that one-
Yep.
-would make some sense. Because what if you get it binder, if you do the work that you need to on the base for the areas that need it and get binder all the way out, then it seems to me you've got a handful of years that you can do the paving on a little bit at a time, you know, stretch it out, you know, a few hundred feet every year or something, put the top coat on.
Right, right.
Unless I'm, you, you guys are the engineers, so correct me if I'm wrong. It would be interesting to know, too, and anticipated, and you never know, but an anticipated maintenance cost of, of what we didn't do to keep it the way it is until we do get it paved. You know, I mean, cause that's, you know, we got a factor that in it. Do we do it now or do we continue to keep it up and then do it? You know, because we can eliminate some of those costs by-
And it is good that we're gonna have this winter to, to be able to see how everything- holds up and, and whether there's some other spots that look like they need TLC before they get paved.
But you've done the worst areas of the-
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
So, so the, the rebuilding of the base that has to be done from here on in isn't gonna be quite as difficult as what you've already done, which is good.
Can I ask a question? And this is, this is kind of for the, the benefit of folks struggling with, you know, the, the cost of doing it all. So, this land over here is the Round the Mountain Conservation Land that goes and touches, is that grassy?
Yeah, you're seeing, you're seeing grassy at the top end of that, yes.
And so, all of this, this large parcel is all land conservation?
Some of it is.
I think the Round the Mountain's on the other side.
Round the Mountain is, is on-
But I thought that it was gonna go all the way around grassy as well. I mean, I know it does near, but, okay, maybe I'm confused. But the, the nature of the question is, the neighbors must know that once you pave a road from dirt to pavement, all of a sudden you have better access. I'm curious about, I mean, you see in this bottom right-hand corner, all this sub-development, and I'm curious if it would stand to reason that we may see some potential sub-development of this, except for the fact that I think that a lot of folks own large parcels of land and maybe wouldn't subdivide their own land. I'm just curious if us putting the money in now, and I'm not all about development, but as a way of potentially recouping some costs and as long as they fall within the ordinance, is a development is a development, are we looking at more potential of development on this road if we pave it?
I think that, there's so many factors there. I mean, I'm sure there's some people that would prefer to not be on a dirt road and might consider something up here because it's now paved, but in the past-
Cause you've got all the Kimberly Drives and all that stuff down in here.
I mean, one thing about this that's gonna be a little more difficult than some of the other places in town is there's a lot of ledge, there's a lot of steep grades.
Yeah.
Um, you know, suitable soils for septics. And there are some people, large landowners, but, you know, some of those large landowners-
They're not getting any younger.
That, yeah, you know, they're, they're gonna be, it's gonna be transferring, there's gonna be land up there transferring hands at some point in the future.
I think the other issue to think about is, does it become a, a cut through and speed issue?
Yeah, right, right. Right now, it's not a high-traffic road. I mean, we don't have, there's very little traffic on it. Once it's paved, that's-
That may change.
It will change. People, because it's a beautiful road. I mean, it's beautiful up there. Um, and once it's paved, people will start going up there and using it much more, I believe, and driving faster. But the neighbors requested it, that's one of the things is that, you know, they were the kind of driving force behind this.
Well, this is all good information. Does anybody have any more questions? I think we have some decisions to make at budget time on this and the more options we can have presented to us, the better off we'll be as far as making decisions about how to proceed with it. And we'll see what the rest of the public works budget looks like at that point.
I guess I have a quick question for Mike and Will. Actually, this summer, I spent a fair amount of time riding my motorcycle around the Northern Kingdom up in Vermont where it was, it's all dirt roads. And they seem to be in awfully good shape. And I don't know if they have a bigger maintenance budget than we do or, uh, different soil conditions or different maintenance, uh, programs that they use. So, is it just that it's a different, uh-
My guess is it's more of how it was, how they were originally constructed.
Yeah.
Cause what we find in here is that the soils that are the base of that road are very fine. Um, it's not, it's not a good granular base.
Yeah.
And so, it holds water. Um, there are a lot of springs up here. There's places where the water at times in the spring is, is just bubbling in the road. I mean, that section that you mentioned, Rick, is that long, flat, straight section? I mean, there's some pretty good ditch lines there, but you can see where it looks like the water is actually coming up right in the road material. And so, it holds the water. And then, once that happens, if it's not really granular and, and more rocky, um, then it, it's easy to rut up. And then what happens is, is the kids figure out that it's a fun place to go mudding and, and it compounds the whole thing.
This road is really pretty nice in the summertime.
Yeah, it is.
That's what you don't know, too, about the Vermont roads is some of those roads may not be plowed in the winter and so, they don't get the winter traffic, which is-
Well, they have houses on them.
This road is, is, I mean, it's pretty nice in the summertime. It's, you know, once they get up there and grade out the ruts from the spring.
Well, thirty years ago, it was closed off in two spots, too, so.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, any further questions? Thanks, Will.
Oh, I, oh, no, I think it's already answered. It was just basically, we should be addressing this again at budget time to make sure you guys are good.
Sure, whatever, I can work with Rick and whatever options you want.
We have options to consider, I think.
Thank you.
On the overall plan. So, thanks for coming in.
Yeah.
How's the bag filling going, Mike?
Getting close.
Okay.
Got sixteen to seventeen hundred filled.
Okay.
Okay.
How many bags are you filling?
I think around eighteen, we're gonna stop.
Okay.
We're gonna do two, but-
We have a letter that was sent to the select board by Maggie Timmerman to consider.
Ken, as I'm a employee of the CSD and this matter involves personnel with the CSD who are my supervisors potentially, I think that I need to recuse myself from the conversation.
Have a seat.
Does the, does the board, does the board agree with that? I think it's fine.
Yeah.
So, you-
You sit up back down.
You can take a break.
Need to stretch my legs out.
I don't know how, how everybody's, whether everybody's read through all the seventy pages of this or not. We, uh, when we got the letter, Rick contacted the town attorney to, uh, to get an opinion as to what's standing the Rockport Select Board has to deal with this issue. And we have Phil's email on that. Uh, and the way I read that email, and anybody else can chime in here, is that this, this is really a school board issue. It's their jurisdiction on this. And I don't know that, that this board wants to, to wade into that and, and to make any determinations on the, on the information that was in the, uh, the response to the FOAA request. I, I would suggest probably not, but, um, the rest of the board can weigh in on that. I do think, um, the two asks that were in the letter from Maggie were, um, to have the town legal counsel review all the material and, and provide a recommendation. And the recommendation from, from the attorney, from Phil, basically, is, is that this is a school board jurisdiction area and that they should handle it. The other ask was to strongly encourage the full transparency of the, the two school boards, including recording and or live streaming meetings. And I certainly think that, um, the town Rockport can offer this facility, this live stream facility for the school board to use and encourage them to use it to help, help with their meetings and help them to be transparent as well. But personally, I, I, I don't wanna get into, to acting on the, the response to the FOA. I believe that that's a school board issue. And I'll let it lie with that and see what others think.
I'm happy to go, but I was looking if there was anyone else. I mean, I agree that it, it's definitely a school board issue. You know, they're, they're two separate governmental bodies. We do, however, both tax our citizens. And having observed this process, cause I was the liaison, um, to the Building Visioning Committee in twenty sixteen and then watching some of how it was unfolding prior to the vote and then reading the FOA, it is really concerning some of the behavior that they displayed. And so, I mean, yeah, I recognize that we're two separate bodies. I wouldn't be opposed to sending a letter of recommendation, just, again, kind of reiterating and strongly offering that this room could be utilized. I mean-
Yeah, I've given this some thought, or as much thought as I can, you know, over the week with the volume of material we have. But, um, I tend to agree with Ken that, um, we really should let the school board do its thing and not get involved. You know, as to Owen's point that, yes, we do represent the citizens of Rockport. The only problem is, is I have no idea how my constituents feel about this. I mean, I'm sure there's some that would like to see us get involved, but I'm also sure there are some that don't. And I just don't have the, uh, the wisdom of Solomon to, to make that decision. You know, people had their opportunity at the, at the ballot box. So, for right now, I'm sort of willing to let the select board, I mean, the, um, school board, move forward with it, with whatever process they think is appropriate and, and have minimal import from the, uh, select board. However, I also agree with Ken very strongly, um, that the school board should be availing themselves of our facilities here to live stream their meetings. I mean, I think that's just good government with transparency.
Any comments from that end of the table? I don't particularly wanna get involved with it, um, either. I think that, uh, if nothing else, it should prove to any governing body, whether it's school or municipal, that, uh, you don't wanna have a FOIA come along because it will bring up some things that although not necessarily inappropriate, uh, might paint you a little poorly. And using the, this facility, it's a great idea. It's been offered for years and it's never been taken up. So, this is a good time for them to step up and do it.
One of the challenges, there's a slight challenge to it, but I mean, I think we can work it out is, for them, you know, con- consistency of board meetings is really important, you know, for us, for them, for everybody. And it, being able to make sure that they can get in here if they have a scheduled meeting. And I believe it bumps up against one of our committees meeting, meetings that meet, that meets, I think it might be zoning, that meets like three times a year or four times a year. And to say, you know, the school board has to move their meeting date for a board that, committee that meets three or four times a year, it would seem like it would be easier to move the zoning board meeting than it would be the school board meeting to give them consistency and get them used to coming in here.
Well, I think, too, that, and it's, the school board can schedule their meetings as they like. I think all we can do is offer the facility as it's available. I know Camden has streaming capability. The quality is, is a little different, this, their system is a little different than ours is. And I do know the school board likes to, to try to meet in the different towns. Particularly the CSD board, I do think they like to get out to, to the outlying towns, to Hope, Appleton and Lincolnville and hold meetings there to, to, you know, interact with those citizens as well. I think all we can do is offer the facility here, um, and as, as it's available. But certainly encourage them to, as much as possible, to, to use a, a streaming facility with ours being offered and, and the idea that Camden may offer theirs, too.
We're often getting many more people watching the live stream than actually attend the meetings. You know, some of those, like, when there's a library discussion, there'll often be a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty views of that discussion. And we might have twenty people in the audience. Even the FOIA, the, the FOA, uh, workshop we had, um, when I checked the day after, there were eight, eight people had viewed that. We had six people at the presentation and eight people watched from home. I have a question. Has it ever been past practice to have annually the, the school board and then the boards of select people of their respective communities meet, like, at least annually? And again, I understand that they're two separate bodies, but, you know, the citizens get one tax bill and we're one-third of it and the schools, two-thirds of it.
Typically, the superintendent comes in once a year or so-
And she presents.
-to, to give us a presentation of what's going on in the school district and sum things up. I mean, we certainly could make the request for, um, a school board member or the school board chair to come in and talk to us as well. We could do that.
I just didn't know if there was-
We have had, I mean, I know that after the vote, the vote that failed a couple of years ago, there was a large sort of, uh, gather information meeting that the select boards attended with the school board out at the high school. And that was fairly productive, actually. And that was probably the genesis of, of the next round of how to, uh, push forward and, and gather more information and present more information. And it was a very useful meeting, I think. But it is, it's difficult because of schedules and things like that. But I, but certainly, um, I'd look forward to having the superintendent come to us to present the status of the school district. We've done that on a once-a-year basis since I've been on the board, roughly so. And if the board would like to have a school board member come and, and talk to us at the same time, then I don't see any problem with that. If they're willing to come.
What, do we ever share anything with them? Like, we buy bulk fuel with Camden? Is there any benefit of meeting with them on a more regular basis and seeing about collaboration? Yes, we are. We are actually talking about that when it comes to park maintenance.
Yes, we are. We are actually talking about that when it comes to park maintenance for ball fields.
Yeah.
Because they have a, they have a guy that's
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
An expert in ball field maintenance. And we're, we're meeting with them, I, I believe Mike is meeting with them next week to talk about, you know, we can help them with some things that they need done on their ball fields with some of our equipment and our guys. And he can help us with doing some of the park maintenance, the ball field maintenance stuff.
Well, I think, I mean, this discussion is all good, but it's straying a little bit from the agenda item, which is basically to consider this. And I'm sensing from the board that, that we don't necessarily wanna take any action on, on this, aside from if somebody wants to make a motion encouraging them to, or inviting them to use our streaming facilities, we could do that as a motion, or we could just ask the manager to transmit that to the, whatever the board would like to do.
I would encourage the manager to just make sure that the, the school board or their representative is aware that this room can be available on a scheduled basis and that we can try to work and see about those couple few meetings annually that would conflict with it.
Yeah, I'm meeting with the superintendent in the beginning part of January, I think the first week I get back.
There is a perfect opportunity, I think, to do that. Okay. Anybody have any further action on this item? Okay, the next item is to discuss the status of our Rockport Select Board representation on the middle school building committee. And for those who are unaware, I received an email from the school board chair just before, literally the Wednesday, the day before Thanksgiving, which was copied to Owen, to the superintendent, and to Rick, and to the chair of the building committee. That email indicated that the school board chair was, was revoking Owen's membership on the CRMS Building Committee because of issues that he went in, went into in the email, which you have in your packet. There followed an email chain of a couple of days where my response was, my initial thought was that that was a Rockport Select Board appointment, and so the Rockport Select Board would be the ones who would decide who that was and, and that I would put it on the next agenda, which is this meeting, and then we would talk about it. I got a little bit of pushback from that, saying no, that he, he had, the school board chair had, anyway. Long story short, we consulted town attorneys and, and it turned out that my view of it was not quite correct and that the appointment was made as a recommendation from the Rockport Select Board. In other words, the Rockport Select Board made a recommendation that one of their members joined the committee, and then the school board made the appointment. So it's a school board appointment, the school board therefore has the opportunity to, to change that appointment. However.
I'm not coming back for this decision.
You're not coming back for that?
I was gonna say.
I'm staying here.
So the school board did, does have the authority to make a change in that committee, should they decide it's warranted. But the school board has not acted yet, only the chair had acted, and so that's where we stand right now. The chair of the school board has indicated to me and to others, I think, that he is gonna push for a change in that committee at their meeting, which I believe is on the twentieth of this month. And so our situation here is, if we wanna, as a board, if we wanna make a recommended, a change in recommendation and, and, or not, as we see fit. And I'll let Owen speak a little bit to the situation since it involves him.
Yeah, you know, kind of in the previous discussion too, I, I do have concerns about how the bond was passed and the standing of the MET. That said, I'm pretty good at leaving outside-the-room issues outside the room. And when I go to that committee, I'm inside that room and the charge of that committee is looking at overseeing the building of this project. So I don't feel that I have hindered the building project. I believe that I'm an, an okay committee member, that I add something to it. Like I said, I've been following it for quite a while now. All that said, I mean, I, I wanna do what the board thinks is the best thing. So I'm happy to continue to serve on that and to present myself to the school board and make my case on the twentieth. But I would look to you all as far as, do you want to replace me now and have that person present themselves in front of the school board? Or would you like me to go and present myself? Kind of regardless, I will probably go and just make my peace with the school board and let them know, you know, why I thought that this was kind of a too-far request and maybe voice some of my concerns about how their process went. But we're a board and I'm your liaison. And if you want a different liaison, I would, I would support that if someone else has the time, the energy, you know, that they wanna put into it.
I have a couple.
Go ahead.
I just have a couple of questions. I know on the school board, we recently appointed Carol Gartley to be on the board. Can someone who's more familiar with that board tell me who, are there other Rockport representatives on that board?
On the school board, there is, yeah.
Yeah.
Marcia Dietrich is still on. She's been on forever.
Peter Orns Camden, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Sarah Bradley Prindill.
Yeah, she's the other. She's the other Rockport representative.
I would think that, and I'm speaking for myself and I'm sure probably everybody else, nobody really wants to volunteer to take your place. And I mean, I don't have any qualms in asking the, the board chair of the school to come and make a presentation to us.
He was invited to do so and declined.
Yeah, he won't want to.
Well, I mean, that's, you know, you can't have your cake and eat it too, you know.
Well, I mean, the reality of the situation is that the school board on the twentieth can make a decision to pull Owen off that committee if they, if they so desire.
And I hadn't quite finished my question.
Sorry.
So if Owen does get the boot on the twentieth, does it have to be a Select Board person that is that representative?
We have some liaisons from Rockport already on there. Anastasia Fisher, what's the other guy's name? I can't remember his name.
He's the chair.
I was looking more at Will than Tom.
I thought you were talking about me.
No, 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 no. I mean, definitely you. I mean, Will's, but then there was the other gentleman too.
Oh, he's, um.
You're the unspoken one. You're, you're the chair.
Is it George Avandrov? Is he from Rockport?
Yes, yep. So we've got Anastasia, Will, and George.
Okay, so do, does it, if you are asked to leave the committee, does it have to be a select person?
I think what will happen, when the committee was first constituted, it was a certain number of people from Camden and Rockport. And then, and then actually initially, they asked for somebody from the Camden Select Board and not the Rockport Select Board. And then when we inquired about that, they said, well, you'd be welcome to nominate somebody from the Rockport Select Board as well. So Rockport is well-represented on the committee right now. And would be, even if, even if the Select Board doesn't have a representative. I don't know if they would entertain another, um, this would have to be a question asked to the school board. If, if the Rock, if the Select Board decides that we don't wanna have, we are not gonna send a representative to that committee, I'm not sure that they would replace our representative with another member because I'm not sure how the membership, I don't know whether Will can speak to that or not.
It would defeat the purpose of the Select Board liaison to that committee is that there's somebody from the Select Board that can report back to you what's going on at that committee.
Right.
So I, I think it would defeat the purpose of having us Camden Select Board.
I think our, I think our choice is, is at, at this point, we could decide not to act and, and let Owen make his case at the, at the meeting. And, and I think that there's a reasonable chance that the Select, that the school board may vote to remove Owen, based on what I've heard from the community. I think in general, and, and I've had a few people call me on this over the last few days, the reports I'm getting is that Owen is a very good committee member on this committee and that he's working hard for what he's doing. But that there are other issues around some of the other things that are going on that are a little bit more personal in nature and, and perhaps maybe interfering with, with his relationship with some of the other board members. That's what I'm hearing from other people. So I think there's a chance that the board votes to, to remove Owen, and Owen will have his chance to talk about that. So our choice tonight, the way I see it, is to, is to let it lie right now or to, if Owen, Owen has said that he would be happy to step aside if somebody else on the board wants to step in.
Let it lie and wait till January.
I personally don't have the time to take it on. And I, by, by the empty chair on the other side of Owen, there's another board member who I don't believe is interested. And so that would leave the two of you if, if either one of you were interested.
I don't have the time nor the skill set to be involved at a particular, at this late date, so.
You already said.
So I, I think what's gonna happen is either.
I know you wanted to speak.
I just wanted to say one thing, and I, I thought about it and I was reflecting on it after the FOA training that we had the other day with the town attorney. And when people recuse themselves from certain dealings, it's because, you know, one, the, the financial aspect or the family aspect, but then also that unreasonable bias. And I reflected on that because do I have an unreasonable bias? And as I thought about it, my opinion anyway, is that no, I have concerns with a different aspect of, of the school board and, and how their process went. But as it relates to the charge of that committee, 'cause if I felt that I had an unreasonable bias against that school and that I couldn't engage in the, the oversight of building that school, I would recuse myself. But I don't, and I'm not gonna look to Will to, to see if he would agree with me. But I do feel that I've been able to keep some of this friction with certain board members outside of the committee meeting room and focus on, I mean, so I was working on the wastewater stuff, making sure that if they were doing heat recovery through the wastewater system, that it wasn't gonna interfere with the investments that we may do in that facility going forward. They were talking about their playground and how they would need granite scraps. And that's kind of the, you know, I spent a lot of time with stoneworkers. I know a lot of people in that field. I can get them scraps, asking questions about the roof and making sure that, you know, what's your roof? Is it gonna be architectural shingers or is it gonna be standing seam metal? Because if you're gonna do solar in the future. So I feel that I've, I do have something to add to this committee. And if, if the school board wants to keep me, I just intend on trying to help. The, the building of the building itself can be completely constructed without having to tear down the Mary Taylor Building. So I'm just focused on building the building that we've been charged with building and overseeing it.
So their next meeting is the twentieth of December, is that correct? So, and ours is the January eighth.
So if we get a message back from them that they've removed somebody, then we can come back and consider.
When was the January meeting scheduled?
January eighth.
No, 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 for the building. January ninth, okay. So that would work. That would work.
You know, and, and just, I would just say go make your pitch and mend fences and see what happens. But, you know, you, you've gotta have people that ask questions and aren't necessarily, you gotta shake it up a little bit every now and then, so see what you can do to get back in favor.
I don't know if I can do that, but I can definitely still help with the oversight of the building. And we'll see.
I think the question that the school board is gonna ask is, I mean, obviously, there's a, there's some damage of your relationship between certain members of the school board and the administration, and, and they have to decide whether they can work through that or not. And then it's their right to, to make that decision in a different way if they like, so. So I think we can let that lie then until next time. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, we can move on to the next item.
Come on back.
Welcome to come back up.
He might decide he likes it down there. He has a different view.
Armrests, though.
Our next item is to, simply to set a date for a meeting with the library committee to discuss the next steps about the Rockport Public Library. I've got emails out to everybody and, and the date that seems to work for everybody is next Tuesday, which is the twelfth at seven PM here. We have the, the NIMS training is that afternoon as well, so it will be a long afternoon.
That's why I got the NIMS training confused.
But we're, we've been assured that that'll be through in time for you guys to get here. And I, I don't know whether it's still gonna be down at Knox County or whether he's gonna come up here.
They were trying to get it moved up here.
I know. Sometimes when he does that training, it's, he may not be doing it just for Rockport. There may be other towns coming in also, so that'll, that'll factor into whether he moves it.
You and I did our training together. There were quite a few people in Knox County.
Yeah, I did. We did ours. Ours was in Rockport, or at least I did it in Rockport.
Oh, I did it with Jeff. I take that back. I think I did it with Jeff.
I did it in Rockport. So that's my thought on that. I have worked with the library committee chairman to, to formulate an agenda for this meeting. And I will distribute, providing we approve the meeting, I will distribute that agenda tomorrow so everybody can see it. And so there we are. And I know at the last meeting, there was a request that we should talk about the library at a dedicated meeting. And so that's, that's why I've suggested going this route. That meeting is likely to be a lengthy one, I would think. But we gotta start sometime.
I appreciate that we're doing it and I think that it will be a good conversation. I'm personally committed to it being a productive and, and civil conversation. I'm confident that it will be and that we will advance this.
The library committee has been invited to participate. Ann, Philly, and I have met a couple of times, and it's probably only gonna be Ann here because a couple of the library committee members are traveling, so unfortunately, they're not available. But Ann is a good representation of the library committee and, and I think she's really looking forward to, to moving forward as well. So I would await a motion.
Can I ask a quick question?
No.
Can you just sketch out a tentative agenda? And the main reason for asking is, are we thinking that we're gonna be approving an architect? So should I review the six hours of?
The item that I have on the agenda is to determine a procedure for selecting a new architect.
Okay.
And like I say, I'll get that out, so. And, and I think we may need to consider another meeting on, fairly quickly on the heels of this one. Because we may decide on a procedure to select an architect. As Rick said, we have a lot of information about the, all the architects.
Well, I think, didn't, didn't Rick say that we had someone, that he had some information and made a recommendation?
He will, yeah.
After reviewing a meeting.
Right, yeah. So, so you'll have that information. You'll be able to start viewing that stuff ahead of time. But I don't wanna presuppose what the board wants to do as far as a procedure is concerned. And so I, I, I don't necessarily know that we'll get to selecting an architect. I wouldn't think so. But, but I think we'll at least determine how we're gonna do it. And then maybe, and then maybe work on it in a meeting the subsequent week or something like that.
While, while we're right here, and speaking of the subsequent week, can we potentially choose a day in the following week while we're all right here?
You guys really are in the holiday spirit, aren't you?
Well, you know, I just, you know, it's a lot better than trying to track everybody down.
Yeah, I agree, Mark.
That is true.
I mean, I'm happy to do the same day.
I'd rather, I'd rather avoid the Tuesday, to be honest about it.
But whatever, whatever works.
Monday, the twenty-fifth is open all day.
What about, what's the Wednesday that week?
That's the twentieth.
Twentieth or the twentieth.
Something else is going on the twentieth.
Hey, what?
My daughter's coming home that night.
Oh, the school board meeting.
The school board meeting.
Actually, but I'll tell you.
You're gonna be busy.
No, but it's supposedly not in here anymore. I can't even tell. They had said in the minutes that it was gonna be here. And then they, when I saw it online, it was gonna be at the, I don't know. And now I actually can't find it on their calendar.
Monday, the eighteenth. What about the Monday of that week? How does that work?
That would, the library committee, well, that might be an old. That, that meeting may not be happening at all. I put that on my calendar months ago.
I would prioritize that too, you know, if it's library.
Monday?
Yeah, but it, that would be like at four-thirty or something like that, so.
Do we actually have solid waste then?
In then? I put those on my calendar for a long time ago.
Okay, I'm good for Monday.
Let's do Monday.
Let's pencil in Monday at this point, and we'll make a final decision on that when we meet next Tuesday.
Perfect. And another quick question. You have this as a meeting, which means that we will have the ability to vote on?
That's correct.
Okay.
What time would you anticipate?
On Monday?
Yeah. Five, six, seven?
Some, yes, one of those.
At the Opera House.
I think we can talk about that next Tuesday when, when the library committee is there too, because we wanna help, hopefully have them too, so.
So then I move to hold a special Select Board meeting to discuss the Rockport Public Library on December twelfth.
Yep, Tuesday.
Tuesday, December twelfth at seven PM in the Parker Meeting Room at the Rockport Opera House.
I'll amend that somewhere between five to seven.
Well, this one is.
Oh, that one, that one, okay, all right. Never mind.
Second, okay. Any further discussion on that motion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay.
I know you all wanna get out of here super quick, but to have that be a productive meeting, are there any things that we should be sketching out between now and then as far as? I mean, we went through a process prior to this board. Do we wanna bring back the bones of that? Do we, do we want people to maybe sketch out what they think they want the process to look like? How can we, or at, at that meeting, are we just gonna talk for three hours and try to figure it out?
Well, the agenda, I've set up the agenda to, to hit some discussion points. The site has to be discussed. We've already decided on the budget. We've already decided on the fifty-fifty mix. The other things on the agenda are preliminary thoughts about a fundraising plan. preliminary thoughts about a fundraising plan, uh, preliminary thoughts about an advertising marketing campaign, uh, and, and procedure to select the architect and then developing a timeline as to how we wanna move forward. We have this, or maybe it's just me, has this goal of a June vote in mind. To get there, we can't trip up at all along the way.
Nope.
And, and it's possible that it becomes not, not feasible anymore at some point. But I contend that having that as a goal and working toward it is better than, than immediately putting off till November because then we'll just slow down.
The next two weeks are pretty crucial, I mean.
I think so, I think we, we've got to make some decisions and, and we've, and things of that nature and so we'll have an opportunity to have a clear night where we can talk just about that. I am gonna, you know, I, the board will have to approve, I've, I've sketched out an, an idea for public comment of limiting public comment for, you know, to two minutes apiece and for a total aggregate of forty minutes or whatever, but that's, that's not my decision to make, that's the board's decision to make. I've placed it on the agenda and the board, at the beginning of the meeting can vote on whether they think that's appropriate or not.
You know, I do, I think it's appropriate and, and to include not being repetitive in your.
Yeah, I've, I've put that in there and also that, you know, that you can't speak a second time unless everybody else who's had a chance wants to, things like that, but.
That's good.
But that's a, that's a, I've sketched it out and, and you guys can approve it or change it as you see fit because that's a board decision, not, not my decision. So that's roughly what the agenda looks like and I'll email it out to you guys tomorrow.
And last question before we vote on this, and this is for Linda and also for the new members. Remind us for a June vote, we need to have the language finalized, when?
The end of April.
Just to try to get our heads around.
It's gonna be earlier because the guidelines for when information has to be in has changed.
Oh.
So I think a lot of things is gonna be earlier and, um, Megan should already have that, I gave her the dates.
It's at least forty-five days, isn't it?
Yeah.
It's changed, it's changed like forty and sixty.
You know, but I mean. Right, it's more than that, but it's a.
But there's two pieces to it as well, is there's the bond language is, you know, but you pretty much set that we're, we're, we're only gonna be asking for one point five million dollars, so the, the bond language, that process can go along parallel to the kind of conceptual design process. The two things can go, can go parallel to each other, but you do not have a lot of time.
Yeah, we have, we're gonna have to work pretty hard on this and, and I think the board has determined that we don't wanna form another committee, uh, we wanna take this on ourselves. We're certainly gonna be riding on the shoulders of a lot of the work that's been done by the previous committees, both the steering committee and then the, the prior building committee. But, but it's, it's time for the select board to, to take the reins and move with this in the next two weeks.
Wouldn't surprise me if at all of our meetings we'll have members of that previous committee in attendance.
We may, yeah, we may very well.
Ho, ho, ho.
Okay, uh, next item is to.
Did we vote on that?
Oh, sorry, no, we didn't, we have a motion on the floor, so that's just on, on the time and date of the meeting, so. If there's no further discussion, all in favor of that motion? Any opposed? Okay, so that motion passes. Next item is to vote to remove the requirement for provider agencies to circulate petitions, we talked about this at the workshop, the budget workshop, pre-budget workshop a couple of weeks ago, so. I would await a motion on that.
I move to remove the requirement for provider agencies to circulate petitions in order to be eligible for consideration of funding as part of the town's budget process.
Second. We moved and seconded, any discussion on this motion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, that passes. And we have our MRC Board of Directors ballot and. Manager's comment said, you know, just approve the slate, but we do have to vote for only one. I don't know whether anybody knows any of these people or not.
Don't know any of them.
I don't know where Carmel is.
It's, uh, it's our last year, I believe, uh, that we'll be a member of this organization. Three of these, the, the, there will be three elected. And so unless somebody doesn't get any votes, I think these three will be elected, so who we vote for, it probably doesn't really matter.
Just so you know, after I went back into my mind palace, I realized that I had spent some time with Sophie Wilson and it's because MRC has their committee meetings in Orono in their municipal room. And she is, I believe, the town manager uh, for Orono or the city manager or whatever it is. So I don't know if it's a good thing or a bad thing, but I know that she's very involved in MRC and has been and basically all of their meetings are at her facility.
Is that a motion?
I would move to approve the slated directors as presented.
We can't do that. We have to choose only one.
Or we can do a write-in.
If we wanted to, we could, yeah.
I nominate Doug Cole.
You're gonna have spare time after December twentieth?
Totally. I hate it when I read what the actual motion should be on the back of your.
Well, I, I missed, that, my motion was a mistake because I thought that was the, you voted the whole slate.
Three will be elected, but we can only vote for one.
I move to approve Sophie Wilson as a member of the.
Just to vote for her, for the.
To, for our vote for the municipal review committee board of directors for the stated term above. Their stuff.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
I'd rather see somebody further up country myself, but.
You want Melanockett? Uh, yeah, yeah. We can go Melanockett, I just threw it out there. Alright, I, I withdraw my motion. Couldn't even get a second. I couldn't get a second.
Are any further action on this?
I'm not gonna, you know, vote on people I have no idea anything about, so.
It's not the end of the world if you don't vote.
Yeah, right.
You just decided.
N-O. The board declines to act.
I move to approve Sophie Wilson as our vote for the municipal review committee board of directors.
Is there a second of the motion? I'll second the motion.
Yeah.
Just to get the motion on the table anyway. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor of the motion? Two in favor, all opposed? Okay, and we need to call a roll on that one, believe it or not.
I just don't know any of these people. I feel like it's just, I agree with you, Doug.
So, Mark?
No.
And Tom?
No.
Owen?
Yes.
Uh, vote yes, and Doug?
No.
Okay, so that motion fails on a three-two vote. Are there any further, uh, motions on this agenda item? Hearing none, the board will not act on this particular agenda item. Yes, we do. We have, we have their bios, yeah. Yeah, but they're, they're, they're all great. I mean, I mean, they're, they're all qualified, I think, is, but we don't have, I mean, I think the, the point is, is that we don't necessarily have any. And, and it's, we don't necessarily have any reason to favor one over another, at least that's what's being said. And the other issue is that there are three names on the ballot. Unless one of them gets no votes, they, all three will be elected.
One bio is seven lines, another one is probably twelve, another one is eight.
Give it to Linda, she can have it.
I mean, it doesn't tell you a great deal.
The point is, we're not gonna be a member as long.
Yeah, and we're, we're not a member for so long, so, you know, the board declines to act, that's, that's fine. Okay, uh, nothing on the wastewater this month, it's been a couple of months since we've had wastewater, uh, commitments and I know the auditor had suggested that we don't need to be doing commitments monthly, we should be doing them quarterly, but I, I do wanna get the message back, I don't wanna fall behind on those.
Right.
So we, we wanna make sure that we have them for January. Liaison reports.
Can we start at this end this time?
Be my guest.
I wanna, uh, address the harbor committee because actually several things came up at this last meeting that, um, I think the select board should at least be aware of, if not take action on. The first is membership on the committee, they continue to have trouble, um, having people show up for meetings so that they have a quorum. And it becomes a problem when you have citizens who show up at the meeting to address the committee and then they can't have a meeting, which is what happened last time. Because they were gonna be talking about harbor fees. And so this fellow showed up, couldn't have a meeting and he, and he left, and I just don't think that's right. There's some issues with how people get reappointed to the committee, committees in general. And again, this goes back to this whole concept of how do we as a town run our committees? And get things done and get feedback, so they're concerned about it, it's, it's an ongoing issue with them, Seth Temple, the chair is going to talk to people and try to take a little firmer, um, position in getting people there, but it's an issue.
I think this has been an issue, was an issue before and we actually, I think, increased the size of the harbor committee to, to help make it not an issue.
And there were, there were questions, there were, yes, and there were questions about, well, if you make the committee larger, do you need to have a larger quorum, but I looked at the bylaws today and the answer is no, you, it's not a percentage, it's a number, so you can have twenty people on a committee with a quorum of three, so you're right, but we still didn't, you know, we have to look at what the quorum is because.
Exactly, but I think when, when they revise their bylaws, because this issue was, was in the forefront, I think there's a, a method in the bylaws to deal with people who habitually do not attend.
Well, we looked at them today, I didn't come across it, but I'll look at it, I'll look at it again myself.
But I mean, it's certainly, I mean, if the chair or, or you as a liaison can get in touch with people and say, you know, we're, we wanna have you serve, but if, if you find that you can't attend, then perhaps, you know, you need to step aside for somebody else who can, and that's, that's perfectly fine. It's, it becomes more difficult if the select board wants to step in and act and, and, you know, involuntarily remove somebody, then we have to have a hearing and it, it becomes a more complicated process, but if people, you know, if they know they can't make it on a regular basis, then it would be best for the town if they.
Actually, that was the first thing that I did when I was trying to stand up the rec committee. There were three members on it and none of them ever attended anything, and so the first thing I had to do was go and ask them politely, do you wanna stay on and attend the meetings or can you resign so we can fill spots for other people?
Right, and I, I think that's what we'll do, sort of take the tough love approach and.
Yeah, and I think, and that issue came up because Sam was at the FOIA briefing, uh, the other day and, and asked Phil the question. You know, in that situation where you have a, you've had some people gather and you don't have a quorum, you can't conduct any business and he asked the question, well, what about if, uh, a citizen comes and wants to speak at that meeting, should you allow it? And, and Phil's answer was, well, probably not. Because then, at a subsequent meeting, when the issue comes up again, there'll be members there that didn't hear the testimony from the members of the public, so that was, he was obviously concerned about it, so he asked the question.
Well, okay, so we'll continue to work on that internally for now. It seems like, I guess, the lobsterman issue has been sort of simmering again over the summer and I, I recognize this sort of, uh, waxes and wanes, just different personalities come and go. We do lease that, uh, land down there to a lobster buyer, so we do have some control over the, over the property. I talked with Randy Gagny about it a little bit and, you know, he agrees, but he also, you know, points out that they lease the land and so they do have some rights to, you know, what activities they conduct there lawfully and, and whatnot, but there's a fair amount of dissatisfaction, I don't know where to go with that at this point, maybe over the winter things will calm down a little bit. But again, I just wanted to make the board.
Dissatisfaction with, with the, the processor?
No, I'm sorry, no, with behavior of, uh, some of the lobstermen, particularly the stern men and some of the people that show up with the processors.
Okay.
So.
Cause we can't do too much about a boat crew, but because we leased the land to that lobster trader, that's something that we can.
Yeah. You know, well, um, let's see, and lastly, uh, the, the point of this meeting that we were supposed to have was to discuss the harbor fees, which we could not do, but I did ask some questions and one thing that came up that really surprised me and I, I feel very strongly about it now and I, in fact, I went back and I looked at this year's budget, but the harbor continues to operate at a deficit. Not a huge one, but, um, I just think that's terribly wrong. And I just don't think, I don't think there's any excuse for the harbor to be funded on the backs of our taxpayers who don't use the harbor, don't own boats, don't go down there. I just think that's terribly wrong and, uh, as we go into setting the fees for this coming year, I'm gonna advocate very strongly, uh, that we have at least a break even down at the harbor, if not actually make a little bit of money down there.
That was brought up at the town meeting, uh, last June by somebody that came up, I forget who, but it might've been Alex, if I remember.
And I'm trying to rack my brain, I was talking with Steve Pixley a while back in Camden. Rick, maybe you could, you're, you're an old seaman. Do harbors across the state typically, are we an outlier in the fact that we subsidize our harbor activity? Are other places making money off of their services?
I would think, um, off the top of my head, I would think that we, we, we could do better. Whether we could totally subsidize the harbor, I don't know. Uh, I know Camden does pretty well. I think they actually make money.
Cause they get a lot of dockage.
Yeah, they, and their docks are full a lot.
Yeah.
And they, you know, they have a lot of moorings as well and the floating moorings, so they, you know, they have a substantial number of moorings and floating dock space that they rent and then the slip space, uh, down by the waterfall. So they, they have a potential for a lot more revenue than we do. I mean, one, one area that we could do better at is the, um, you know, our docks are not rented like Camden is, Camden's are. I know the harbor master there does send boats here if their boat, if their docks are full.
Some of that is because our, it's only been a couple of years that we've had the full
Yeah.
electric pedestals down there and things of that nature and the word hasn't necessarily gotten around to the, to the big boating community. But yeah, you get one of those, you know, hundred-foot boats in here for a few nights and that generates a fair chunk of change.
Yeah, it does.
And they expect to pay it, uh, for that kinda service.
Well, I'm, I'm a strong believer in usage fees. You know, I think people that use the harbor should pay for it and I think that, um, the larger boat should pay more than the smaller boats and, um, you know, try to graduate it.
It's a per foot charge for the.
Yeah, well, I'm talking about even, you know, upping the fees on the moorings and the tie-offs and, uh, things like that. I certainly don't wanna penalize the guy that comes down and puts his canoe in or, you know, their kayaks in or the guy that comes down and wants to go squid, squitting with his, uh, his family. But again, there's a lot of money down in the harbor and the boats, I've been a boat owner over the years and, you know, I think those people are gonna have to be asked to pay a little bit more, so at least other townspeople aren't subsidizing that harbor.
Okay, that's a good question to build on that, so, um, we had noticed that when we were having like weddings and stuff down at Harbor Park.
Yeah.
That they were capitalizing the entirety of the park and we really weren't charging them, so we did up the fee and that happened recently.
And we limited the size of the.
And are we, are we closing that gap because of that, upping the, the entertainment type fee?
Over the last three years in thirteen and fourteen, it was three thousand bucks, fourteen, fifteen, it was two thousand. In fifteen, sixteen, we did raise sixty-seven hundred.
Is that, when, when did we change it?
Well, it must've been.
Well, the other issue was that we got a lot of complaints for people who rented the park for a wedding and took up the whole park that then, you know, on a summer, on a summer weekend and the park becomes unavailable to the townspeople. And I think this, the previous board decided we didn't want that to happen because the park exists there for the enjoyment of the townspeople.
So we've, we've limited the size of the tents and the length of time that they could rent it?
That was another thing that we were finding was they would set the tent up two, three days prior to the wedding and then the tent would just sit there, but people couldn't mingle around.
It is, I mean, the harbor, I mean, granted, the, the people who own boats use the harbor way more than other people, but somebody who lives over in West Rockport on a hot summer day might wanna drive down there and have a little lunch down there with a cooling breeze and use the park and things like that, so.
I think that, that Doug's point is a really solid one.
And I know in Rockland they raised the rates a couple of years ago and, you know, they get a lot of pushback from people, but Doug, you know, I, I, it's, it brings in a chunk of money.
I mean, naturally, there, there are benefits to the harbor that are indirect benefits that would, I, I'm sort. Benefits to the harbor that are indirect benefits that would, I'm certain, elevate the tax base, you know, tourists coming to see the harbor, et cetera, et cetera, staying in local hotels, eating in the restaurants, but I think it's hard to quantify that, and I'm actually, I'm surprised to learn this, and I do think that it's something that we should consider.
What does it say for mooring fees? What do we generate in mooring fees?
Well, about fifty-four thousand dollars. So I mean, that's the big one, and tie-offs is eleven thousand.
And the other...
A slight increase in those two areas brings, generates some cash.
Well, and the other area that I think needs to be looked at is the boat storage in the parking lot down there, because that's, that's way under market, has been for a long time. Granted, they have to get the boats out of there by a date certain, but still...
Not remembering, not remembering what Alex had said the increase was over the past years, what's the, the bottom line for thirteen, fourteen versus fifteen, sixteen?
It jumps...
How much of an increase?
Yeah, it jumps around a little bit. Thirteen, fourteen, we were seventy-five thousand short. Fourteen, fifty, we were thirty thousand. Fifteen, sixty, we were seventeen thousand. So we were headed in the right direction. But sixteen, seventeen, it went up to twenty-one thousand dollars short. And actually, this year, we're anticipating about fifty thousand dollars.
And I would think that's because of that, the reserve fund, the additional money we put into the reserves for the...
We bought a bunch of stuff for Andre, too. We bought a new outboard for Andre.
That came from a reserve fund though.
Wasn't that a hundred and ninety-two thousand, I think, was the bottom line? I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out is what...
Of expenses, yes.
Okay.
But that was... That was just expenses, though.
Right.
I was talking net, right.
Okay.
The bottom line is that the, the harbor committee should be looking at recommending fee increases to, and the board, the board could give them direction and saying, we'd like to see it come closer to being self-sufficient.
Well, this, and again, this is why I brought this up, because we're going to have, obviously, an opportunity to comment on this, because it has to come to us for approval. But if it's okay with the board, again, I'm going to try to encourage them to come up with at least a break even on the bottom line.
Well, at least move in that direction, I think.
Doesn't that have other spinoffs, though, to the, your parks with the usages and the fees you charge out there for what you use to maintain them?
Well, sure, but I mean, right now, we're talking...
No, but I'm saying, it's a spinoff that something could be done elsewhere.
Well, I think it's, it's, the thought is good, and, and like I said, look at those storage fees, too, because those are way under market.
Oh, yeah, they are.
And that's something that we looked at.
Last thing on this topic is, because I do think that it's important, and we're going to probably end up talking about it during budget season. Is there any way of trying to get the harbor committee to, to tentative, or somewhat quickly, take a tentative glass, glance over all the mooring fees and all that stuff, so we have some sort of idea what they're planning on doing as we go into the budget?
We were supposed to do that in the last week. We have to approve those fees.
Yeah. But you were supposed to do that last week, but you didn't get a quorum.
There you go.
But it would be helpful for, I think it would be helpful for Doug if the, if the board was like saying that you would encourage them to move the fees up so that they could be closer to being self-sufficient or...
Do we want to tell them to move the fees up, or do we just want to say, be, we're trying to get to a good break even point?
I think, I think the sense of the board, from what I'm hearing, is that Doug is on the right track.
Okay.
Unless, unless anybody else shakes their head.
Don't make me a liar and...
Yeah, I think a recommendation from them, we can go with it.
And maybe the harbor committee, maybe you can talk to them, maybe they could come in and, and give a committee presentation in probably not January, but maybe February. Maybe you can, you know, give that as a date for them, for the February's outboard meeting.
And that's the only meeting that I had.
Okay.
And it really wasn't a meeting.
And it wasn't even a meeting, yeah.
Okay, any other liaison reports? I didn't make the pathways yesterday. I would defer to Linda if she did.
Great meeting.
Great meeting.
Just a good one.
Perfect.
Am I no longer on Pathways? Did you take Pathways for me?
I thought we both were.
Oh, cool.
I remember the one I, you committed anyway.
Yeah, I was going to do the same thing. Can Linda give us an update?
The, the other one that I, I think is quite important, that Doug and I need to get with Diane and get our Northeast ambulance done, because our contract with them expires in June.
We're working on a, you'll get a doodle poll for the Northeast ambulance for the second, third, or fourth of January.
January, good.
We finally got, we, we had trouble getting the other towns liaisons' names. Just got that today.
So, on the ambulance topic, I guess, this is one of those things to where, you know, when you're trying to understand all the different aspects of local government, and you find that one that's kind of off in the periphery, and you've got so much other stuff to do, you never really understand it. I still don't have a full grasp on what the, our committee membership on Northeast is, what do we expect of them, what are we paying them, how is all this work? I've never really...
We have a con, the four towns have a, is it the four towns?
Which four towns?
Camden, Rockport, Lincolnville, and now all of Hope, I think.
Almost like, it's just like the Solid Waste Corporation.
Yeah, we have a contract with them to provide nine-one-one services for the four towns for a certain amount of money. And I think Rockport's share of it right now is, I'm going to say, thirty thousand dollars, plus or minus seventy-four. Yeah, I think twenty-four, that might be right.
Is it a percentage, though, kind of broken down similar to how the Solid Waste Corporation does it?
Yeah, it's, it's done that way.
I suspect you're going to see, or a request perhaps for...
Yeah, I, I think the increase, the request there is going to be for a sizable increase.
What do we get for it?
We get the fact that they respond to our nine-one-one calls.
No, but if they were responding to our nine-one-one calls for thirty thousand, what do we get for the additional money that they're asking us for?
That they'll continue to do it. Because right now, right now, they're losing money significantly on the nine-one-one service.
We pay them about twenty, twenty thousand bucks a year.
I think it's about twenty-four.
Yeah, if you average it out.
We switched to them. Didn't everyone say you guys are charging way too little money, you're going to go broke pretty? That was about the only thing I remember hearing.
Well, and, and what's happened is, you know, to give you the history on that, because I was involved in the selection of that and the, and the change from Camden First Aid, we went out to bid and there were three applicants, Camden First Aid, Delta, I think, and, and Northeast. And Northeast's number was an order of magnitude less. And their reasoning at the time was they had a presence here already. They were doing, they had a transport business that was based in Rockport, and they were looking to, to expand that somewhat, and they said, well, the two businesses together will make us, allow us to provide this service for less money. And they said, and we had a guy from the, what's Rick Petrie from the state came in and gave us a real good primer on what drives this. We, we got a, we got an education in the ambulance service. It's all driven by call volume, and you have to have a certain call volume to sustain the service. Now, what's happened since they've been here, the call volume has gone steadily down. So part of it, part of their issue is the fact that the call volume has gone down. Also, their transport business has gone down as well. And so their economic model is becoming a little less viable.
And that's the hospitals. That's Penn Bay sending it to Belfast.
Right, well, to...
Or from the nursing homes to Penn Bay.
Yeah, nursing, inter-nursing home transports and things like that. So, you know, we have a, I mean, interestingly enough, one of the things I found out through this whole process is that the town has no legal obligation to provide ambulance service. We don't have to do it. I think we have a moral obligation that we want to provide that service for our citizens, and, and we want to have that service there. And I think that what we found out through the whole process was that, you know, it costs a lot of money to have that service. You're paying for it. And, and these people aren't even paid as well as they should be.
No.
They're highly trained professionals, and the work they do is, is irreplaceable, and they're not getting paid what they ought to get paid.
One of the challenges also is that the requirements we have for paramedics, the level of paramedic coverage, we have a, the contract requires a pretty high level of number of paramedics on each, in each shift.
Wait, whose contract?
Our contract. And that's what we required, because there was a discussion at the last, when we did the last contract about, even Rick Petrie said, you know, you don't need a paramedic in every truck.
Right.
And the number of calls that require a paramedic are pretty small.
Very small.
But the committee and the committees and, and select boards all opted for the, basically, the Cadillac of coverage.
And there are some, still some strong advocates for that among some of the boards.
I certainly don't understand the model very well, so, so I do need to get up to speed on it. But I'll just prelate a little story here, because I'm one of those nerds that listens to the scanner. Last week, there was a call, admittedly, this went out to the Rockland EMS service, but it was for a fifty-five-year-old male who was having trouble sleeping.
Well, and that happens...
Then they're obligated to respond to that stuff.
They are. Well, and the other, the other difficult part in what we learned about the ambulance service is that they don't get paid a dime unless they transport. So, for example, and this happens with some frequency, they get called because, well, a diabetic, let's say, is having difficulty. So they respond to the diabetic.
They never put you in and take you somewhere.
Provide care to the diabetic, including medications that are onboard the ambulance. Diabetic gets better, says, I'm fine, thanks very much for coming, and they don't get a dime for that. They've used their supplies, they've used their medications, and that's a, that's a state and federal law issue. And I mean, to me, it would make all sense. They've, they've come to your residence and provided service, they ought to be compensated for.
If we can get a meeting in the early part of January, we may want to have something on the eighth to present, because if, if there's a, an unreasonable increase, we've either got to go out to bid again, or...
And who's going to be at that? Because, I mean, I like the fact that you're on there, because you're the former police chief.
Doug and Mark are the new liaisons today. It was, I was the liaison for that.
Does our fire chief go? Does our police chief attend?
Yes, they can go, yep. And you can go, you can go.
It's a public meeting.
You certainly can go to the meeting and gain, you know, get some...
Is it on the calendar? Is it on the...
No, we haven't set it, we haven't set it yet.
The problem with going out to bid again is, quite honestly, we're not going to, even, even if they double their rates, it's still, it's still going to be a bargain compared to what, what another service would likely charge based on the, based on the responses the last time around, and/or trying to provide the service ourselves and hiring people.
No difference in paying for your E-nine-one-one dispatch rather than having your own.
It's a bargain. And so I think we're just, I mean, obviously, it'll be a conversation, and for the most part, the people that I've interacted with with that service over the years have been reasonable. They've had a few management issues over the last eighteen months or so. But the people who work there do an excellent job, had very few complaints about that, so. It's a tough one, because I think, I think the increase is inevitable. Linda?
As, as part of their increase, are they proposing to pay their health workers? Is that part of the increase?
We don't, it's, it's too early in the game to even know.
Sorry, Linda, what?
He was asked, she was asking if they're proposing to pay their staff more, because they're going to increase.
Yeah, that's, we don't...
I mean, they operate, they're a private business, so we, we don't have a say in that necessarily. I mean, I guess we could write it into the contract if we wanted to, but they may balk at that.
If it helped keep people here that were of quality.
That's, that's a discussion you guys can have.
Is this the same thing, though, that, uh, like the midcoast solid waste, and I'm, and I apologize that I'm taking up, I know you want to go home. But I'm just, because the solid waste corporation, I understand, is it similar that all four towns have to agree on the contract?
Yes.
But you don't have to go to the citizens like we do for certain solid waste things that board in our...
It's a budget number. It's in the budget. So at town meeting, citizens could turn the budget down. So it's in the budget. But it's a, it's a fascinating discussion, it really is. But what I would encourage you to do is take a look at the town of St. George, because they've opted over the years to, to fund their own ambulance service. They pay for it. So look at the town of that size and how much they pay for ambulance service, and they get some donations and things like that, but it's, they're paying, right now, that small town is paying, I think, three times what the town of Rockport pays for ambulance service.
Alseth pays Rockland for their service. Rock, Rockland provides service to the town of Alseth, and I believe it's ninety thousand dollars that they pay.
So we've had a bargain for a long time on that, there's no question about that. Okay.
Further liaison reports? I have no rest. Are you, is that, are you through?
I'm, I'm good.
Tom, any liaison?
Upper House Committee has not met since the last time I was here and discussed their needs around the genie and the seats in the upper balcony being removed. Library Committee has met. They met at a time when I was at work, couldn't attend, had not received the minutes yet.
Pathways met last night. I was unable to attend. We did, though, I looked over the agenda and it seemed like it wasn't uber controversial. Do you want to, is it, is it crazy for us to get Linda to give us an update?
I suspect she wasn't there.
Okay. She was there.
It was a great meeting, actually. Annika, who lives in Forest Glen, who's a student at the high school, presented...
Charland, she's my neighbor's training. Annika Charland.
Yes, presented her, her report, her academic report about the need for a crosswalk from Forest Glen over to the high school. Which, yeah, it was actually illuminating, because Forest Glen, I guess, has a number of...
Well, that's the street where I live.
And a number of kids growing up to be at the high school.
I was standing, when I went to try to find you to give a note to congratulate your daughter, I was, I drove through Forest Glen extremely slow, because there were kids everywhere. They were all outside playing and riding their bikes and...
There, there is that, and, and there are, just speaking as a resident of that street, and who's have, have had kids and still have kids, they have to catch a school bus, and where the school bus stops has been an issue that has been discussed over time, and I mean, I want you to just imagine a ten-year-old waiting out there at Route ninety in the winter, when there are snowbanks and cars that might skid and traffic that's coming into the schools at a busy time. That's, it's a dodgy situation.
Public safety issue, so just be aware that that might come for you before...
Isn't there one, a, a student out there that's working on a proposal?
Well, she sent it to you. Maybe you sent it to the Pathways Committee.
Right, yeah.
I think that would have to be a, a state crosswalk issue.
Yeah, well, the state would have to be involved in that, yeah.
But it's also a public safety issue that the town certainly can think about. But anyhow, that was, that was a topic of conversation as well as some...
Tom gets a sidewalk. I want one for my house.
Don't you?
Messed up my signature.
Don't you have a sidewalk in front of your house?
He does.
Yes. No, I don't.
Okay, moving on.
Um, Recreation has reached out. They want to have a meeting coming up very soon. I need to connect with them, Pathways you just heard about. The building committee for the middle school, they've got some, some better images, and the bigger thing was that they're battling with a height zoning issue. But that should be resolved in the not-too-distant future, and they, they still have a good aggressive plan to try to get to contract-out phase, bid-out phase quickly, which will kind of put us as Johnny on the spot for the contractors while they're still looking for work, because the word on the street is that the state's finally going to release some funds for some of the schools that have been in the hopper, and so hopefully, we catch the contractors prior to, to all of that. And Rees-Across America is, is it this Saturday?
Yep.
This Saturday, Rees-Across America. I know that they're stopping at Frohawk Bridge in Lincolnville. That's where I'll be. I don't know if there's any scheduled stops in Rockport, but they do drive through Rockport.
I think they're stopping in Madomic Valley?
That's typically, they'll stop at Madomic and they stop at Frohawk Bridge, and we, we lay a wreath into the river there. And then they drive through Rockport, and people typically, they'll be like at the, you know, one of the restaurants along the way, waving and stuff, and that's it.
ORC has begun their season. We've had a good discussion over the last couple of weeks about the hospitality house and their need to expand, and it's been actually rather illuminating, because we've learned a lot about what they do. We're working on a, well, we're working on a solution that will allow them to do that. It's, it's without going into great detail, it's, it involves the fact that those will not be dwelling units, but just auxiliary structures, because they won't have cooking facilities, and then they're required to actually come into the central house to eat as a community-type thing. And the program there is, is quite impressive. So that's, that's where ORC has been so far. Legacy Rockport has met actually a couple of times and has re-engaged with the Simonson Corner Community Hall. It's a project that they're going to help them with. The, the, the board of the Simonson Corner Community Hall has become reinvigorated. They've got new people on there, and they're trying to get that building up to code so that it becomes an asset to the town. Legacy Rockport will also be providing and sponsoring the fireworks for Holiday on the Harbor tomorrow night. Cemetery Committee, Linda assures me we'll have a meeting sometime soon. ZBA has not met, and that's where I am.
The Rockfield Chapel is having a little get-together on December fourteenth at six-thirty, I believe. I'm going to try to go over.
I am, too.
They did a nice little job presentation and so...
Yeah, I'm going to try to get there also. Okay, anything else?
I've moved to adjourn.
Second.
Moving second into adjourn, all in favor?
Oh, let's see now, do I do... Oh, let's see now, do I do?
Well, if you waited a couple more.